Hello friends and welcome to the July 6th edition of Weekly Witness, Texas Impact's weekly opportunity for mainstream Texans of faith to learn about public policy issues here in the great state of Texas and have a conversation about how you can engage in the process. My name is Scott Attneff, your host and Texas Impact's Engagement Director. And today's episode is brought to you by Methodist Healthcare Ministries of South Texas and Friendship West Baptist Church in Dallas. And before we get into it, I just want to say how great it feels to be back in person. I had a chance to hug the neck of some of my favorite advocates here in the state of Texas. Those of you who are watching online, I still love you all too. But we are broadcasting live today from First United Methodist Church of Austin in the Murchison Chapel for the first in-person episode of Weekly Witness in 16 months. And y'all, I've certainly missed you and it's good to see you all in person. What is less exciting is that the governor has called the Texas Legislature back for a special session that's beginning this Thursday. One of the things among potentially many that will be on the docket is legislation that will suppress the voices of Texas voters. And so that's something we're going to be talking about throughout this episode and over the course of the next few weeks. And we have an exciting panel who's going to be talking to us about the special session, about voting rights legislation and how we can respond. But before we jump in, I just want to take a second to remind you of the incredible impact you had the last time Texas had a special session. Many of you will remember that in 2017, the legislature came back to look at bathroom bill-related legislation and you all mobilized in incredible ways. Hundreds and hundreds of you showed up at the Texas Capitol. Thousands of you made telephone calls, you preached sermons, you wrote letters to the editor, you filmed commercials, you did all of the things that you needed to do to make a strong statement that Texans of faith opposed that legislation. And at the end of the day, the outcome on that one was what we wanted. We have to do that again this year. We need Texans of faith to mobilize in every way possible. And so as we go throughout this episode today, I hope you have a notepad, I hope you have a pen, I hope you have your phone, I hope you're taking notes about all of the ways that you can engage and all of the people that you need to be talking to to bring them into this fight over the course of the next few weeks. Because friends, it is going to be a fight and we need Texans of faith mobilized. And so we're going to be talking about that today. So before we get too far in, I don't want, you know, in case you only listen to the first minute, I want everybody to go ahead and mark your calendar right now. We need you to be in Austin at the Capitol Monday, July 19th. If you want to come in early the night before, we'll have some programming, but we're going to have a rally on the 19th and we need every Texan of faith possible to be at the Capitol ready to have your voice heard that day. So we're going to be encouraging religious leaders in all sorts of ways that we're going to talk about in the next few minutes, but Texans of faith have to make a loud and clear statement. The Texans of faith support democracy and oppose efforts to suppress votes. Can we do that? We have some people in person today. It's all right for y'all to talk back now. Can we do that?
Yeah.
All right. So now to talk with us about that today, we have with us on this episode, Texas Impact's Executive Director, B. Morehead. Hey, B.
Hey.
We have our Legislative Consultant, Beeman Floyd. Hey, Beeman.
Hello.
And Texas Impact's Advocacy Director, Josh Houston. Hey, Josh. He gave the wave. Podcast folks know that he waved. So B, we're going to start with you today. Our member judicatories, our members, all of the folks in our network really prioritize voting rights and mobilized in significant ways during the regular session. Why is this such an important issue for Texans of faith?
Well, it's an important issue because voting is the bedrock for the entire apparatus of our democracy. And it's the way that we mediate our differences, phase one. Phase two is in the legislative process when we work with the people we've elected to mediate those differences further. It's really important for Texas faith communities to engage in this special session, not because if everybody does it right, it'll be over quick and we can all get back to whatever else it was we were planning to do. The reality is the special session is only going to last 30 days, but we're going to be talking about this issue for quite some time. And it's really important, I think, that we lay a foundation for the faith community's engagement in the months and years to come. So Texas Impact is announcing two projects today. The first one is that we're launching our Let My People Vote campaign. And that is our special session campaign. The centerpiece of it is a rally that's going to be at the Capitol on July 19th, like you said. And we're going to have some pre-rally programming the night before at a dinner, July 18th. We are so excited that we're co-hosting this event with the Legal Women Voters of Texas and Texas LULAC. And the National CEO of League of Women Voters, Virginia K. Solomon, is going to be one of the speakers at the dinner on July 18th. So really excited about that. She's going to be joined by United Methodist Bishop Mike McKee and some other speakers who we'll be naming in the coming days. We're going to offer a training at this event. So it's not just come to the rally at 11 o'clock, yell a bit and go home.
Right.
We're hoping people will come the night before for this program, which we're calling the Status of the American Election Crisis. And then in the morning of July 19th, before the rally, we're going to have a training. The Legal Women Voters is going to be offering this on how you can be engaged in local elections in the three elections that are coming up in the next 16 months. A constitutional election in November, a primary and a general for statewide offices. No matter how this 30-day special session turns out, we're going to have these elections. And it's going to be really important that in all 254 counties, people are engaged and participating and helping make them successful. So come and learn from the Legal Women Voters how you can be an election judge, be a deputy voter registrar, those things. Then at 11 o'clock, we'll go to the Capitol, we will probably yell a bit, and then go in and have visits with legislators. But the second piece that we're rolling out today, we've had some people ask us a question that I will admit, it surprised me a little bit, when we had a couple of clergies say, "I'm talking to people and getting a little pushback. They're saying that this is a partisan issue and that the faith community shouldn't be involved." That, I was surprised by that. Wouldn't have been the way I would have thought of it. But I understand that people, you know, people are coming from different perspectives. To help people get sort of a handle on faith communities and the issue of voting and voting rights, we are launching a new toolkit. It's called a Matter of Faith. It's a compilation, most of it is not original research material. It's a compilation of prayers, reflections, sermon starters, stuff that some more people have said over a long period of time to help congregations consider voting and particularly voting in the United States where it's the foundation for our whole democracy through the lens of faith. Our goal is to help people of all faiths shift from accepting this polarized partisan paradigm that we're being handed and instead to lead our state and nation to see voting as both a means to and a manifestation of the beloved community that we're called to embody. So we hope that folks will use the new publication. It's on our website. If you go to our homepage where it says, "Let My People Vote," it's pretty big and it's at the top. I'd be surprised if anybody could miss it. And click the link that says, "Register and Get More Information." When you get there, you'll find the link to the new publication. And we're considering it a living document, so if you have prayers or reflections or sermon starters you'd like us to add, send them our way and we'll go ahead and stick them on in there. So I'll leave you guys to talk about the details of the special session, but hope everybody's coming July 19th and I'll see everybody there.
We will see you July 19th for sure. Next, I'd like to welcome to the conversation, Beeman Floyd, Legislative Consultant. Beeman, we just wrapped up the 87th Texas Legislature and the governor's called us back or has called the legislature back starting July 8th. I think one of the things that would be helpful for folks is understanding, first of all, how a special session is different than a regular session. So what do we need to know about the mechanics of a special session?
Sure. Both the regular session and the special session are constitutional concepts. They're embodied in our constitution, the rules about them are laid out constitutionally. The regular session comes along regardless, right? So we, the second Tuesday of every odd number of year of January, we get together and we have a 140-day special session, up to 140 days. Either side can, either house can adjourn early. Special sessions are a different animal. Special sessions are also, are actually called called sessions. What that means is that the governor says there is a compelling issue and that issue is so compelling that I am going to authorize, I'm going to call the legislature into session for 30 days, up to a maximum. Again, the legislature could come in and adjourn the same day if they felt like it and the session would be over.
One could wish.
One could wish, right? But typically, special sessions go pretty close to the 30 days that they're called. But the other thing that's really fascinating is that in a regular session or a general session, you can hear basically any kind of bill and you can vote on any kind of bill and you can, subject to, again, the constitutionality of the actual subject of the bill, you can pass laws about dogs and cats and chickens and electricity and elections and the budget and all kinds of things, right? The called session is restricted in terms of subject matter to the governor's proclamation related to the session. So the governor issues what's called, and you'll hear these words in the next few days, I hope. The governor issues a proclamation and that proclamation calls the legislature into session to discuss what the governor thinks needs to be discussed, right? And so that proclamation can be drawn very tightly. What that does is it does not prevent the legislature from filing any kind of bill that it wants to and it doesn't prevent them from having committee hearings on any kind of bill that they want to. It prevents them from actually passing in the House or the Senate any bill that they want to.
Okay.
This is also important because what you will see when the governor makes the call, he will make a preliminary determination of the subject matter. The legislature will come in session and you'll immediately start hearing about committee hearings and bills that are not part of the call. And you will scratch your head and say, "What is going on here? I thought that they said that you could only hear this one thing." Well, what's going on is that the legislature is using its authority to try to push the governor because at any time during a special session, the governor can expand the call. We may recall that in 2017, the governor called the legislature into session to listen to one little old sunset bill and then expanded the call by proclamation during the course of the legislative session. So it's a pressure game.
Right.
The governor says, "This is what I want." Legislature says, "This is what we want." And they push-pull each other for the next 30 days.
And so to be clear, so if people are listening later, they don't hold you to this. It is now Tuesday, July 6th at 12:12. As of now, any idea what is on the call?
Well, there are two answers to that question. The first one is no, because the governor won't tell us. Which is its own thing if you're a citizen of Texas. If you are a citizen of Texas of any stripe, you have to ask yourself, if we're going into session in less than 48 hours, why don't we know?
Right.
Right? That is not okay because what you're doing in essence is you're saying to the community, "We don't want to hear your voice." Right? "We don't want you to know what we're doing." It's a strategy, not the act of an actual policymaking legislator or governor. The second answer to your question is, well, yeah, we've got some strong signals. And those strong signals are elections and election reform, internet and the ability of internet service providers to be able to ban people from the platforms, that kind of thing. And the teaching of critical race theory in our schools, which is just the most out-of-bounds political thing ever, in my opinion.
Right.
And then there is a fourth thing, which is almost a fait accompli that we know has to be dealt with in one way or another. And that is that, as I think everybody who's lifted a newspaper in the last six weeks knows, the governor vetoed funding for the legislative branch of government using his line item veto authority in the budget. This is the most unprecedented move in, certainly in line item veto history and as far as I know, in Texas history since the Constitution of 1876.
Right.
And it creates an imperative that that be dealt with. The question is, so what do you do? Just restore it or do you try to append some sort of language in the legislation that says if you break a quorum, your office loses funding? And what in the world could possibly be the mechanics of that? We don't know. But the four things that have been strongly signaled are elections, the internet issue related to banning people from platforms, critical race theory, that's another cut at that, that bill passed, but they didn't like the amendments that the House took. And this fixing the veto of the whole funding of the legislative branch of government.
So one of the things, I know you speak at a lot of our events during the course of legislative session and beyond, and one of the things you're so gifted at doing is helping us understand some of the broader issues that are at play. And so is there anything else? Josh is going to talk about voting legislation in just a second, but is there anything else we should be thinking about as we move into this session about what might be impacting the conversations?
Yes, and B said it. We have, there is a notion that our political structure right now is defined by this single horizontal continuum and that is left and right, right? There's left and right or progressive and conservative or minority and white or, you know, there are a bunch of different ways that people sort of try to define this linear horizontal continuum. But we all know it. We all live it every day. If you get in your car and drive from downtown Austin to Lano, Texas, you drive the continuum.
Right.
It's awesome. You can see it in road signs and things in front of stores and marquees and stuff. But I would assert, and I am asserting as often as anybody will let me, that there's this other thing, there's a vertical axis, axis rather. And that vertical axis is the centralization of authority and the hearing of the community voices, right?
Right.
And I think that if you basically look at that whole axis, that horizontal axis and that vertical axis, the more extreme ideas come with the centralization of authority and the more rational work-a-day working ideas, which is what I think democracy is supposed to yield, come with more community voice.
Right.
And so every, I would encourage everybody who's listening to this to look, not only look at these bills, in fact, seriously not look at these bills necessarily as left or right, because either side can abuse what this legislation will do.
Right.
And instead, look at these bills about whether or not the whole wisdom of the community is being accessed or whether it's being suppressed.
Right.
And I think that's important.
Appreciate that visual. I'm going to bring Josh into the conversation now because you mentioned what these bills might or might not do. Josh, my understanding is we haven't seen actual legislation yet. We just spent 140 days talking about voting legislation. So what did we learn from the session and what are you watching as we move in to the special called session in terms of voting legislation?
We learned there was a lot of energy. There were three, over, more than 350 bills filed that could just be classified as voting rights affecting it in some way, shape or form, I mean, between 350 and 400. That was both Republican and Democrat that filed it. We ended up having to very closely monitor, and when I say closely monitor, I mean watch until the absolute very last day for amendments, up to 80 different bills or vehicles, if you will, that were moving or could have been amended. They weren't all necessarily bad, it was just they all could have been amended and gone in a bad way. And we were watching those right up to the very end. So kind of the best way to know, yes, I mean, no one has even said it's on the call, certainly nobody has filed legislation yet, but the best way to kind of know what they're going to be perking on is to look at where we've been and kind of doing a recap of the things that they addressed, continuing as a clue of things we're likely to see again, at least in some shape or form.
And so what is, let's start with a positive, right? So what opportunities do we have during the session? I know there were some good pieces of legislation that we supported.
Yeah, the one big good bill that passed was ballot tracking for mail-in ballots. And what ballot tracking is, is the ability to track your pack, track your ballot, the way you would track any package you order on any, you know, web-based platform service that you get that comes to your house and drops stuff off. You can figure out if your ballot is still at the county, has the county put it in the mail? If you've sent it back in, has the county received it? What's the county done with it? Have they accepted it? Have they rejected it? If they rejected it, why did they reject it? This kind of basic information, build a go-on line and check to see where your ballot's at. So that did pass, that's a good thing, that got through. We think the next logical step would be offering the voter an opportunity to cure. So what do I mean by that kind of technical term, opportunity to cure? It basically means that no one should be disenfranchised for sloppy handwriting. And what is sloppy handwriting? Well, that's kind of the problem, right? It's the eye of the beholder. It's very subjective to the judge that's looking at the ballot and comparing it to your application and seeing whether or not your signatures match. That's a very subjective thing. And rather than just canceling you outright right away, I mean, that's the biggest reason a ballot's rejected, right? Is either you have sloppy handwriting or you just forgot to sign it at all. And that's the overwhelming majority of ones that get rejected, which is a very small number to begin with. But rather than just rejecting it outright, letting the voter know, letting the voter come in, prove who they are and say, "Yeah, that's me." And then if that's true, then the vote gets to count. And not only does that, in franchising way, not only does it give you back your franchise, it actually increases security because all those ballots that are suspect, that were rejected for, by the early voting ballot board for either missing a signature or having a sloppy signature, they all go to the Attorney General for investigation. And while the number's not large, you're talking, you know, several hundred in a primary, a couple thousand in a general election, there's still human beings that are going to have to go look at that and investigate that for fraud. And the overwhelming majority, I mean, golly, I mean, the vast, vast, vast majority are just sloppy handwriting or a clerical error. And so if you can get these dolphins out of the tuna net, so to speak, right away, you're going to decrease the overnight, you're going to decrease the number of investigatory hours that some taxpayer-funded, taxpayer-supported employee is having to go through and investigate. So let's just get those out right away and have people focused on the ones that are actually suspect and not all the ones that are just somebody's clerical error or bad handwriting.
So I like starting with good news, but Josh, I think we're more worried about the potential for some bad news.
We are.
I spent way too much time on social media over the course of the last few months and one of the things that people kept asking was like, "What's so bad about it? It doesn't seem that bad." So I'm just going to go ahead and allow you to answer all of my social media friends.
Yeah.
What are we worried about?
We're best to go worried about, I could be a lawyer here for a little bit, time, place and manner regulations, right? So think about a college campus and free speech. College campuses do this all the time where they say, "Well, we're not opposed to your speech, we're opposed to the time, place and manner in which you do it." Okay, that might be reasonable. It also might be that we're going to have this one little courtyard on this one little obscure part of campus where you're allowed to do your free speech. And it's so hard to do it and so onerous to do it and so hard to get a permit that you've effectively canceled out free speech. Where does that line fall? We don't know. Frankly, that is what the Supreme Court wrestled with on Thursday and we don't have a clear test from the Supreme Court. I don't want to comment too much, we're still analyzing that opinion. But what we're talking about is how close can you go, how many cuts can you do before it's death by a thousand cuts? How are all the neutral ways that look innocuous, what kind of effect does that have on certain populations? And if those certain populations are effectively barred from the ballot, let's remember, the fundamental question here is who is an American and who gets to have a say and who represents us? And if we're doing a bunch of little technical regulatory things that actually have an effect on certain people and exclude them from the democratic process, then we're starting to really question our commitment to universal suffrage and whether we have some sort of lesser form of democracy in America.
All right. Anything else you want to add on the actual legislation?
Yeah, I mean, here's what we need to look at. So restrictions on voting by mail. Let me give you a very, very hard example of what I'm talking about. There was, there was a bill that was going to shorten the ballot receipt deadline. In other words, if you're, it was going to shorten it from the day after the election, postmarked by election day, to four days before the election, the end of early voting. Well, we know that the vast majority, 86% in one county, of the ballots that were rejected are rejected simply because they arrived late from the postal service. So if you shorten that deadline, you're going to increase the number of rejected ballots. Now, we're not in any way doing anything for security by doing this. We're just increasing the number of ballot rejections by doing this. There was another bill that was going to, it was going to prevent you from handing in your mail-in ballot. So one option you had was to mail it or if you were afraid that the county got it to you late or you were afraid of the mail or whatever your reasons may be, you could take it down to the early voting clerk with your photo ID and hand it to them. The bill was going to prevent you from doing that. Why?
Which seems more secure, right?
Exactly. I mean, you're showing up in person with your ID, you know, it is actually even more secure and yet we're going to prevent you from doing that. Why? No idea. It just has a suppressive effect. So there's a number of things like that with restrictions for voting by mail. You had a number of other restrictive things on voting by mail, such as being able to look back 25 years of your signature. Well, I don't know about you, but as you get older, your signature evolves. As you get older, you begin to have medical issues, you may be taking medication, any number of things that can change your signature with time. Again, just another way to try to trip people up and cancel out otherwise valid votes. There was a provision in the very, added at the very last minute on Senate Bill 7, which was going to make you use the exact same ID number on your registration, on your application to vote by mail and on your ballot to vote by mail. So if you, you know, registered to vote with your driver's license number and then you forget that you did that and you stick your social security number on it, they were going to cancel, they were going to reject your ballot. You're still the same person, you just made another technical mistake. Again, death by a thousand cuts, right? None of these things ended up themselves, but when you add them all up, we're starting to get some really restrictive provisions. There were provisions that were going to be restrictions on what you could do with an application to vote by mail. And I don't mean the county mail-in amount to 4 million residents or however many registered voters are in the county. I mean you and your, you in your Sunday School class, you go to a Sunday School class where everybody's 65-plus and you think it's a pandemic. Let me get everybody 65-plus who's already eligible, their application to vote by mail. There were a number of bills that would make that criminal to even pass out a government document. So yeah, we have a number of things like that. Intimidation, being able to empower poll watchers to intimidate voters. Other provisions to allow those poll watchers to intimidate them with cameras and follow them around the polling location that violate the secrecy of the ballot. Increasing criminal penalties on election judges. So the election judges feel intimidated because they're not able to maintain order in their polling location due to the threat of criminal penalties. You have all sorts of penalty enhancements. And then you had in these bills, all sorts of new crimes. So not just enhancing an existing crime, but new crimes that were very poorly written where it is unclear what's legal and what's illegal, which of course leads to fear and intimidation. You had civil penalties where they could sue you, not put you in jail, but just take your property if you were to do something wrong. A bunch of civil penalties, of course, that's intimidating because they're coming after your wealth, which is the way you protect your family. All these different things were in the bill, at least at one point, or in different, either in Senate Bill 7 at one point or another, or in related legislation at one point or another. You had changes to the polling locations. Being able to limit, the way the formulas would work would limit polling locations in low-income areas. What's the rationale for that? You had restrictions on the early voting hours. So we had a big debate about souls for the polls.
Right.
One of the provisions said, "No early voting before 1:00 PM on a Sunday." And we had a great big discussion on the Senate floor where Senator West, an African-American from Dallas, raised questions and argued this is targeted at souls of the polls. And the bill's author said, "We want to give poll workers time off to go to church." Okay, so we all agree that this is aimed at souls of the polls, or at least we agree that it's aimed at Sunday voting. And then when they got over to the House, the House member said, "Oh, no, it was a typo. By 1:00 PM, we actually, it actually was supposed to say 11:00 AM." So we have some interesting finger pointing and some contradictions in the story on that one. We can anticipate a number of surprise provisions as well, things that we've not been able to see, things that we won't have seen in filed bills. An example of this was a last-minute provision that was added in conference committee, which would have made it easier to sue and challenge and overturn an election. The House has signaled that they didn't really mean that one either and don't really want to go there as well. But we would suggest that things like this is why leadership really needs to avoid writing legislation in a conference committee, in a Star Chamber, if you will, exactly for this reason. And put things out in committee in the light of day, open to public scrutiny and let's have a good debate about the provisions of this, not just pass a thing that's done at the last hour in the dead of night.
So let me ask both of you, before we start closing out with giving you a list of things that you're going to do from home. We're going to ask listeners We're going to ask listeners to talk with their legislators over the course of the next couple of days, and then we'll give more instructions over the course of the next few weeks. But I'm going to ask you to put your seminary hats back on. What would your message be to faith leaders, to people of faith, and how they would raise this issue with their congregations, with their communities, and with their legislators?
I mean, I would say, do you think American democracy should hear from the whole community or not? Right? I mean, if you say, if you say, it doesn't necessarily need to agree with the whole community, but should it be able to hear from the whole community? Because what we're talking about here is not, what we're talking about here is essentially saying, we only want a segment of the American population to be fully participating and not the entire American population. And that's weird. I mean, that is like, that's amazingly un-American. And so it's, and when somebody says, if the pushback is, nobody is forbidding anybody from voting, I mean, I would say this, and Josh just did a great job of summarizing a bunch of these different ideas. Do you want going to the polls to be more like a Fourth of July picnic? Or do you want it to be more like going through a very tight security system when you're trying to, like, you know, enter the Hungarian Parliament building? Because one of those things makes you real nervous and makes you maybe want to take a pass on touring the Hungarian Parliament building. And the other thing is something you want to go do. When you talk about the chilling effect or the intimidating effect, if that's a word, or the just physical barriers to voting, all of those things are in play in all of these issues. If you're older, it's harder. If you're a kid who's on a college campus without transportation, it's harder. If you are, the less means you have, the harder. And if you are scared of activists in your face accusing you of voter fraud before you ever cast your ballot, it's harder. And the bills that we're talking about all empower the wrong stuff and suppress the right stuff, in my opinion. And so I think if you're a pastor talking to people, what you're really talking about is the community. Here's our community, how much of this, how much do we want to make it hard for some of our brothers and sisters in our community, harder for them to vote than it is for other people to vote?
Josh, anything to add in the closing?
Yeah, I would just ditto everything Beeman just said.
It's usually a good strategy.
Well, yeah, that's a question. I will leave it to our clergy to use your own faith traditions, but the fundamental question is, who are we comfortable excluding? And that's essentially what we're talking about with bills. But, you know, you do your own theology. The thing that I would say to pastors is, you know, persuasion will only go so far with certain folks, so turn it around and get real practical. Say, okay, fine, we're going to double down on our commitment to these democratic institutions. And the number one way we're going to do that is we're going to help the county administer the election. And we are going to get, just yourself as clergy, but also in your congregation, involved in being election judges. And that is, of course, a huge time commitment that not everyone can do, but the huge value to that is, we're going to learn how this works. And we're going to actually learn how it works so that we know. Because if you want to, you know, the biggest retort to this is partisan, this is partisan, read the bill. And if you actually know how it works, then you can see where they're aiming things that have a suppressive effect. But you're not going to be able to get to that conclusion unless you've been involved. And you have to be involved as an election judge. If you can't be an election judge, be poll monitors, which is the nonprofit version. Have your attorneys in the church, be a part of the Election Protection Coalition. Get involved in learning how to do voter registration drives, knowing about how to do the applications to vote by mail, knowing who's eligible to vote by mail, getting your folks to vote by mail. You can all do this perfectly nonpartisan work that is pro-democracy, that gets your people involved in the democratic process to help them know how it works. Because the biggest thing we're combating out there right now is disinformation and people actually not knowing what they're talking about.
Right. Anything else before we close out?
Yeah, I would say in all of this and everything that Josh just said, which I agree with, by the way.
Also a good strategy.
While you're at it, be nice to everybody. If you're, if, my church provides snacks to people standing in line. Give a snack to everybody. Give a bottle of water to everybody. Part of what we're combating is, again, just the whole idea that it's okay for high drama, ridiculous energy at election places. That's crazy. That is not the United States of America. That is not Texas. And so, in the course of all of this rational breaking down of policy and rational communication of that in your congregations and in your spaces, be nice to everybody in the context of elections. Because if everybody votes, democracy wins, kind of by definition.
Yeah, and I really like your Fourth of July analogy. We were talking about that, whatever day that was, two days ago. I've lost all track of time, friends. I mean, everybody was at our community fireworks show, right? And that is what democracy should be like. Well, I'm also going to close it out, and for those who are listening on podcasts, know that right now I'm looking at the camera of those who are watching us live. Y'all, now is the time. We have, we've heard from you, I know many of you have been complaining on social media, this isn't the time for social media warriors, right? This isn't the time for folks complaining in your Sunday school classes. This is the time where Texans of faith have to show up. And we haven't said that yet this year. I had one clergy friend who was a former board member who said, hey, man, I'll show up once a year. Like, you tell me when that one time is, and like, our whole church will come down. This is that time. July 19th is the day. We need you, we need your congregations, we need busfuls of Texans of faith showing up at the Capitol on July 19th. We have information at TexasImpact.org. We will have buses coming from Houston and Dallas. I've been lobbying some folks in San Antonio, sorry. I've been talking to some folks in Huntsville about having a caravan over, like, this is the time where we make it a party, we have some fun, and everybody shows up in Austin to speak up for democracy. So we need everybody at the Capitol on July 19th. There are a couple of you who are right now thinking, I can't make it to Austin on July 19th. First of all, try. But second of all, I understand life sometimes happens. If you can't make it to Austin on July 19th, you need to find a time to find five friends and visit the district office of your legislator and have the meeting there, right? They need to be hearing from you. Pastors, religious leaders, Sunday school class teachers, we're going to need you in the next couple of Sundays to use the liturgical guides. We're going to need you to have some conversations with your congregations, with your groups, because we need, again, all Texans of faith participating in this. We do have about 12 or 15 churches or congregations so far who have committed to co-sponsoring the rally. If you're interested in more information about that, you can reach out to me at Scott@TexasImpact.org. If you can't make it, or if you can, we are still raising funds to make sure that we're providing lunch for everybody and doing all the things that it takes to put on a rally. You can go to TexasImpact.org to financially support the Let My People Vote campaign. Finally, we do have a statement that you can sign to let the world know that as a Texan of faith, you oppose voter suppression. If you have questions about any of that, please reach out to me by email at Scott@TexasImpact.org. We'll find time to talk about how you and your congregation can be involved. And finally, Josh is going to be providing updates. We'll be providing updates throughout the legislative session about updated action alerts, updated talking points. So make sure that you're a member of the Texas Impact Rapid Response Team. You can go to TexasImpact.org, click on the Action Center, register to join the Rapid Response Team to get an email or text notification when it's important for you to make a telephone call to your representatives. And if you'd like to join a group of people in your legislative district, join a legislative engagement group, and we'll pair you up with people in your local community to work to build a long-term relationship with your district office. Friends, again, now is the time. The legislature comes back on Thursday in 48 hours, so we've got to get organized quick and get all of our friends mobilized and ready to raise your voices. And finally, remember, if you appreciate Texas Impact and the Weekly Witness community, please make sure that you and your congregation are members by going to TexasImpact.org/join. This work is supported by people like you. The legislature returns Thursday. There is no time to wait. Texans of faith are going to have to mobilize in historic ways to protect voting rights. So let's all do our part to mobilize our friends, congregations, and networks. Now's the time, let's get to work.